Planning Board meeting. The date is August 24, 2020. It's 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely and therefore is being recorded. Both audio and video are being recorded. My name is Deb Hacks. I'm the Planning Board Chair. Would the Planning Board like to introduce themselves, please? Barb, start with you.
I am Barb Mullfelder.
Okay. Dan?
Dan Hap.
Okay. John?
John Hukey.
And Steve.
Steve Caruso.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We also have Ginger Hannah, our Secretary of the Planning Board. And we have Dean Whalen, the liaison from the Village Board. Don't think we have anyone else from the Village on tonight except for Carrie. Well, he's not from, he's just a public person right now. He's not.
Oh.
Thanks for being public, Dan.
Okay. With that being said, we can get started. We have one item on the agenda tonight. And that is the approval of the meeting procedure document, Section 5. And there was also a change to Section 10 that if you have a little time, I'll give you a chance to look that over before we continue. Under Section 10, the fourth bullet has been changed to instead of asking the public to state their name and address, we ask that they would like to give their name and address. We can't force them to give their name or address due to privacy issues. I'll give everybody a second to look that over. And if you have any question, anybody else had any questions on Section 5, while we're going through that, let me know.
I can see address, but they don't want the names either, us to ask their names either?
No. Right. And were you at the, you were at the training with me, John, at Hudson Valley? Remember, we asked that question and the woman was like, absolutely not. You can't force them to give their name due to, you know, privacy issues. Who knows who might be looking for this person? And all of a sudden, based on our meeting, they're going to know who they are and where they live. So gotta be careful with that kind of thing. So has everyone had a chance to review that section? Everybody okay with that change?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Going back to Section 5. Does anybody have any questions on the changes that were made to that?
I had sent some comments prior to this that the agendas referred to in the second and third bullets would be for regular meetings, right? Not special meetings? Because you wouldn't have the time in advance of a special meeting.
It's a good point.
Because up in Section 2, it says you could call a special meeting within 24 hours or given 24 hours. So you can't possibly have an agenda the Thursday before. You know, so.
That's for regular.
Yeah.
Well, if the agendas are provided for the regularly scheduled meetings as shown here and then for any special meeting, the agenda could be provided that the time, the notice of the meeting is provided.
It does say that when possible, Dan. So I mean, if it's a 24-hour meeting, it might not be possible. So I think the third bullet covers it. It's when possible items of the agenda should be given to the Secretary of the Board.
Mm-hmm. Good point.
Well, we probably don't have to change it.
Yeah. Yeah. I, yeah, I agree with it. It's a good point, Dan. But yeah, I agree with John. I think we're covering it by saying when possible.
In the third bullet, in the fourth bullet, you don't have that. You put when possible in front of the fourth bullet. You couldn't do that as well.
Yeah, we could do it that way. Carrie, I'm going to defer to you on this because this is going to be all three boards that need to agree to that change.
I think, you know, in the case of a special meeting, there are rules about that as it is, where we have to notice that usually doesn't, you know, you're not going to see one 24 hours later. The reason, I mean, obviously, this was referring to your probably are all of our regular meetings because we were trying to make sure that the office could facilitate materials coming in and the boards had time for review. That hasn't really happened in the last two years. So I don't know that you need to put special meetings. I mean, we could, you know, I guess we could add it, but we're going to have to then. Our board hasn't adopted anything. We just all have to adopt the same, the same document with some variation because of our boards. The general, when possible, I didn't, this will be given. I don't think you would, I mean, if you had a special meeting, you would, you know, you usually, I forgot, Ginger may know better, the days you have to give as it is. We do have to notify the paper ahead of time. So I don't know that you would, if you're having it the following weeks, like the ZBA just did a special meeting for tomorrow. You know, they had it with a minimum of a week. It'd still be getting the agenda the Friday before. I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, what if it's a special meeting that has, let's just say tonight, for some reason, we have to have a special meeting on Thursday? How would that be handled?
Ginger, what's the timeframe of the meetings in between? There's, there's a certain amount of days you do have to wait even for special because of notification sometimes.
I, honest to God, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm there's, I'm thinking like there's five days, something. I do know that Allison has said that it, it has to be, we have to allow time for the paper to be notified. And it doesn't have to be a special legal notice, although when I notified the paper this time, they did put a legal notice in the newspaper of the special meeting for the zoning board, which is tomorrow. And then we have to post it. So we posted on the website, which isn't a big deal as far as timing is concerned. But, you know, the other thing is like, I only work Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And so if I'm not in the office and then, like, I wouldn't see you doing that, I guess, unless it really was an emergency kind of thing that you would have to give that short a period of time to schedule a special meeting. So, and to what, to Carrie's point, what we're really trying to avoid is, you know, us getting materials late and then not being able to handle them in the office or get them out to you in time so that you have a chance to review them before the meeting and stuff like that. A lot of that went on during Stuart's where, you know, you were getting them on Friday, then you had to spend your whole weekend reviewing stuff in order to be able to be ready for the meeting. So we're trying to avoid that happening. So, I mean, I suppose you could put when possible, the agenda will be prepared no later than the Friday before the day of the meeting. And again, I think that that would be covered under, you know, like if it isn't possible, then it's not possible. But there are guidelines for special meetings that need to be met. And maybe those should be in here, but I don't know. Did Carrie, did Allison go, Allison went over this document, right?
I don't, we don't usually put in the requirements of the days because that's a, that's a procedural, that's not something we can change. That's a New York State legal process. So this is our personal meeting procedures. I don't think I've ever seen a special meeting happen within two days. Because again, if you're coming back, the applicant's obviously been asked to do something and to produce something within two days is, I, I don't think you would see that happen. I'm not going to say never, but I haven't seen it in a long time, ever. I've never seen it. So, you know.
Then what is manned by the third bullet in Section 2 when it says in writing at least 24 hours in advance unless an emergency exists?
Special meetings. Okay. You know, I, I didn't even catch that. I don't know. I mean, if that's something, let's see, notice of special meetings every Friday. That's really funny. I'm just, it's really funny.
Well, you would think that at least 24 hours in advance would, would be the emergency.
Yeah.
It would have to be because you would have to actually, we do have to notify the paper. You know, if they weren't at the one meeting, we still have to notify them for the next meeting. It's one of those things.
Right.
So, you know, we could take, you know, we could make a change in the, it could even go in that section too, but it could go under the agenda. Let's see, Section 5. How would you word, I'm trying to think of how you would word it. We could always put something in there. And Danny, if you have any ideas, because again, this would, this would be for your board as well.
Danny?
I'm going to say anybody.
Carrie, it did say that you've never seen this in your experience on the board. And can we really cover every single situation down to the final nail? And, you know, the times, years I spent on the zoning board years ago, we never had anything that could not meet the requirement in the bullet as far as putting it in the papers. So I think, I don't think we, unless we're going to have a voluminous document, we can't cover every single situation that might possibly come up. I'd like to just say we leave it the way it is.
Carrie?
Yes, I'm listening.
Do you have the power to share my screens or I can share my screen?
I.
Under the NICOM handbook for Village Officers, it says 72 hours prior to the meeting.
Okay, I'm looking, you know what? It doesn't.
6.1.
I see your screen, but I don't know if it's letting me, let you do. Uh, let's see it. Multiple participants can share. I'll try sharing your screen, see if it happens. Does it let you?
One second.
Okay. Yes.
Can you find the document?
Well, if we know it says 72 hours.
It's under Section 6.1 under the NICOM. No, it's not, let me go there.
What if I make you a host? Let me see. I'm going to make you a host for a minute. Ready? Change hosts. It's all you.
Hello. Hi. Hi. Hi, everybody.
How you feeling, Barb?
It's not working.
Uh, one second.
I thought he was a co-host. He's now the co-host. He's actually, I made him the host.
There you go.
Hey, nice.
Except that I don't see.
The end of the second, notice of meetings. You don't see anything?
Yes, no, we haven't.
Go back.
I got it now. Yep.
What section are we doing? Okay, 6.1.
6.1, the second paragraph.
So three days.
Then it may be held only if there is an emergency need for conducting the meeting less than 72 hours.
I would say if you guys got to get together or the board has to get together for.
It's pretty clear by what Danny is pointing out, that needs to be changed.
Emergency management, anything like that? In case of a crisis?
Yeah. Which, I mean, that might, that might apply to the Village Board. I can't see that a crisis situation would apply to the Planning Board or Zoning Board. However, this is 2020, so you never know.
You could simply take out the third bullet under special meetings if that's in conflict with it.
Why wouldn't you just change it to 72?
72 hours.
What's that paragraph says?
That's what I would do, too.
That's fine.
Well, you can do that or take the third bullet out like Carrie suggested because the fourth bullet covers, it refers to the public officers law. So it covers it, right?
Yep, you're right. Yep. Okay, so we're scratching it?
Actually, that's, that's true, too. Right, yeah.
Yep.
All right. So we're kind of going a little awry here. Are we, so under Section 2, Bullet 3, are we all in agreement of taking that totally out?
Yes.
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 Okay. That's my board.
I think that works fine for all of them. That's, that's great. That's fine.
Okay. All right.
You're the one who'll set it up for the rest of us now.
All right. So that, that's coming out. All right. So, hang on, let me, I just want to make sure that when we have this motion, we're covering Sections 5, Section 2, Bullet 3 is coming out, Section 5. We're all okay with that? Nobody had any questions on Section 5, right?
It's okay.
And then the only other change that was made and we didn't notify everyone originally was in Section 10, Bullet 4, speakers will be asked if they would like to give their name, address, and organization, if any. I believe it said formally that speakers must or speakers should give their name. So we're, we're taking away the should and putting in would if they would like to. Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Since you're taking the charge on this here, the third bullet, did you want to?
Where? Third bullet where, Dan? What section?
Was that Section 10 you were talking about?
Yeah.
As opposed to the front of the room to the microphone? Because sometimes you get organizations, the microphone is not always in a front.
But it is for ours.
I think it means kind of just step up to speak. I mean, I'm just, maybe that's the phrase. I don't, I don't know.
It's a cavernous room, and it's nice that they step up front because some of them don't get up to the microphone and they just stand so far back. It's easier if they approach the board's table. So he's not very effective with the microphone. At least you can still hear him without continually asking him to speak up. That has happened.
Okay.
This is Dean. Do you want to clarify the, this is Dean. Do you want to clarify the third bullet? Comments from.
You're breaking up.
Seating will not be accepted or something like that? I mean, that's what we're trying to get at. Yeah, I always do. Sorry. Under the third bullet, do you want to have a second sentence that says something to the effect, comments from seating will not be accepted? That's basically what you're trying to get at.
It's not a bad idea.
That may be a little harsh. It's something. Is that what he's saying?
Well, what he's saying is speakers must step up to the front of the room. Comments from the, the audience, you know, from your seat will not be accepted or something like that.
Be recognized. Or be recognized?
Yes. Sounds good.
That whole idea.
To be rec, yeah, I think that makes it.
Because we've had, we have had minor incidents where.
Deb, this is Ginger.
Evidence where we end up with a debate between the speaker.
Danny, you're breaking it up.
Ginger?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, we're reverbing here, but do you want to make it specific to say that, you know, we'll step up to the microphone at the front of the room? Because the, the issue has been that if they're not speaking into the microphone, and I mean really speaking into the microphone, it's not, we're not able to pick it up on the recording. And then it's very, very difficult to, you know, transcribe that. So even if we're in the room, you know, like I take shorthand, but I don't take shorthand as quick as all these people are talking. And so, you know, if we really want to be able to capture what people are saying, especially at a public hearing, because it's supposed to be basically word for word, then they need to be able to speak into the microphone. So do we want to add that to that?
I like it, Ginger. So it's say that speakers must step up to the microphone at the front of the room.
To be, to be recognized, yes.
Well, after the recognize. I say, you recognize them first, then they come to the front. So we wouldn't have to put after the recognize here because then you'd have everybody just jumping up, coming up to the front without, you'd want to recognize them first, I would think.
But we don't. We usually just say, does anybody have anything else? And people usually wait their turn.
Yeah.
Well, we're knocking it out for all the boards. Now you guys don't even have to meet.
I've got a comment on one, two, three, four, number five, six, nine. Just on that maybe at the beginning of, I would say, the trustee meeting, our zoning board, that it's reiterated that each person that wants to speak can only speak for five minutes.
That's, that's in there somewhere.
Yep. But I think it should be stated verbally. I'm just thinking about Stuart's. People who had already submitted material got up and read from it. It says here, but I'm just thinking that the chair, you know, before me, you know, when a meeting starts, just say, you know, I'd like to remind you, you know, the five-minute rule, one speaker, and not to be reading anything. Maybe I'm, maybe I, Stuart's is still in my head and it's just.
But we do actually, we do allow them if they didn't get their written material into us in time.
Oh, right.
At a, at a public hearing, we do allow them to read a letter.
Okay.
Or something to that effect.
Okay. Maybe I'm just being pinky.
So, you know, and I know for Stuart, I usually just said, you know. Dean, we can't understand a word you're saying.
Dean, you can try to put it in the chat if you want to say something that way. It's not coming through.
No. You sound like you're 50 feet, like 20,000 leagues under the sea. Remember that TV show?
No, you're showing your age.
Well, you recognized it.
Deb? And that, that bullet, that's one, two, three, four, five, six bullet, do we now say that?
Under what section, John? Under what section?
I'm sorry, still the same section.
Okay.
Says each speaker has only one opportunity per topic to speak. Did we enforce that or did we state that in the past? I thought someone got out more than wants to talk. And if that's the case, maybe that's one of the things that if we get into a situation, we ought to announce ahead of time that, that each speaker has only one opportunity to talk and not a half dozen opportunities after someone else talks, they want to get back up.
I think we're really pushing it on that, you know, I would love to put that in there, but I don't know that, I don't know that NICOM or any of the open meetings law would allow us to say you can't, you can't speak. You know, you've already spoken, you can't speak.
Why don't we have it in here then? Didn't Allison review this? I thought that in the email.
Does it say they can't, can only speak once? It doesn't say that.
Only one opportunity per topic.
Per topic. That's the same thing as what I just said.
Right.
One timer, one opportunity.
No, per topic. Let me, let's just say you're talking about the roof design. That's one topic. And then parking could be another topic. So it varies.
I hear you, Dan.
Okay. So.
Deb, can you just, Ginger said she wanted you just to talk about nine, the first bullet, just because it's a little different for you. Nine, the first bullet, just because it's a little different for you.
Yep, I'm going to go to that right now. Section 9, the first bullet, general rules of procedure? Section 9, first bullet, general. Dean, can you mute because we're getting really bad feedback?
Yeah, Danny's got my.
There we go. Okay. So Section 9, the first bullet, it reads the chairperson presides at the meeting. In the chairperson's absence, the blank presides. So we have to fill something in there. I suppose it could be a person appointed by the chairperson as a stand-in at the, at that time. Could we word it like that? Well, I mean, what if I get hit by a bus? So I might not be able to tell you who's next in line. You know, we've talked about this before, having, having a second in command, for lack of a better term, so that it's not just, you know, helter-skelter at the meeting. Oh, like, you know, I remember it happened once with Tim. And it's like, well, where's Tim? Where's Tim? What are we going to do? What are we going to do? And that just looks silly, you know, before the public.
Could we phrase it? Deb, this is Ginger. Would you consider doing the, you know, like making it the person who has the longest seniority on the board? So at least it's someone who, you know, let's say the, the next person might be someone that's been on the board for three years versus someone that's, you know, new to the board or something like that.
Congratulations, Steve.
It's usually Steve anyway, but.
I like that idea.
I guess we could do it that way.
The most senior member would preside then.
Right.
If somebody drops off the board in the meantime and we don't change the document, then it would default to the next most senior. You know, like, let's say, you know, you know what I mean? So it's with, we don't have to necessarily put the person's name in there, but we say, you know, the, the person with the longest seniority on the board would take, would preside.
I like the most senior member presides. I like, I like that.
I do, too.
That was good.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, you could misinterpret that to be the oldest person on the board.
I don't want it. We'll go with Steve.
Sorry. That might even be me, you know? I mean, I'm 65 years old, so, you know, that could be me. I mean, I'm not on the board, but you know what I'm saying? It's like if you say it, the one with the, with the most seniority or the longest.
Most seniority.
You know.
The member with the most seniority. Okay. All right. All right. All right. Does anybody want to, does anybody have any other questions regarding anything that we've just reviewed? I know there's been more than just that one thing.
Did you have the wording for bullet number three under 10? Was that going to be speakers must step to the front of the room to be recognized and to use the microphone?
Must step up to the microphone at the front of the room.
Right. Well, they wanted to put in and to be recognized.
To be recognized, right. Yep.
I thought we weren't putting that in.
No, we are. Otherwise, we hope that that will, you know, prevent people from speaking out from their seats.
Right. I thought we were putting in that sentence. I thought we were putting in that sentence. Comments conceded will not be recognized. Are we having two sentences?
I don't know that we need that.
The second?
Well, actually, you know what? That's actually redundant. Because the second bullet said speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, and then it says speakers must step up to the microphone to be...
You're right. You're right.
So we can take out "to recognized" on the third bullet and just say speakers must step up to the microphone at the front of the room, period.
Okay.
Okay.
At the front of the room to speak.
Well, I think if you say speakers must step up to the microphone at the front of the room...
Okay. You're assuming they're going to speak, right? Okay.
Yeah. Although I don't know. Yeah. You know, I, I think it's that, that old kiss thing, keep it simple, stupid kind of thing. You know, if we start getting too wordy. All right, so we've made changes to sections two, five, and 10. Ginger, did you get everything?
I believe so. On, well, five, I think, didn't that the document go out with the, like, I don't know the...
But we have to make a motion to accept the changes that went out. So since we've made changes now to more than just went out, went out, went out in the email, I think the motion has to be to accept the changes in sections two, five, and 10 as discussed this evening.
Okay, so...
Five, Deb, what was the change in five?
In five, the change was that the, the timing that the public had to have information in to the secretary by.
What bullet said that we're talking about?
When possible, items for the agenda shall be given to the secretary of the board by Thursday before the meeting.
Yeah.
That, that one.
What was the change to?
That, it didn't say anything about a time.
So I think, Deb, there's just, I guess, a point of, you know, order or whatever is, um, what I, what I think the board has is the corrected one. Does everybody on the board have number three already? As when possible, items for the agenda shall be given to the secretary of the board by the Thursday before the meeting?
I do, yes.
Yeah. So that, that is changed from the, what the original wording was in the document. That's what we should be reviewing.
Okay.
Did you want to put at the close of business? Because somebody can drop that off at nine o'clock Thursday night in the mail slot.
But I think, I think we were accepting that, weren't we, Ginger? If somebody dropped it off after you left Thursday, as long as it was in there when you got in Thursday morning?
Friday.
Well, my understanding from Allison is if it's a public hearing, then we have to accept materials even up to the day of the meeting, even up to the meeting, we have to accept them, but...
I think, yeah, I think Allison said it had, you know, even if it was 11:59 PM on Thursday, it's still Thursday.
So there's two, there's two different things here. It's kind of like, if it's a regular meeting and not a public hearing, like it's, it's just a regular meeting without a public hearing, then we're trying to get materials in by the Thursday before the meeting. If it's a, if it is a public hearing, we're still trying to do that so that we can get them, I, you know, like Lance and I can get them to you and you can review them and stuff before the meeting. However, what Allison said was that when it's a public hearing, we have to accept materials up to the time of the meeting. So even if they come in at the end with materials, we still have to accept them or, you know, because they can just show up at the meeting and speak. So this one is trying to, you know, by saying by Thursday before the meeting, we're trying to, in, in cases where it's a regular meeting, not a public hearing, get the materials from people by Thursday so I can get them out to you at least by Friday, and then you've got at least that amount of time to review them.
It doesn't read that way. I mean, it just says the agenda, so it doesn't say special meeting, public meeting, or anything.
I add something just to clarify this. Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
All right. What you're looking at, the number three, the given items to the secretary of the board by Thursday, it's because she's printing the agenda by Friday. We get it online, et cetera. The only person who that applies to right now is you, because you're the only one who can set items on the agenda. That is not for the public. Public cannot set items on the agenda. It's not about the materials. This is under agendas. The information that has to do with the agendas is in the fifth bullet. That has to be received by the Wednesday. It will be there, obviously, if it's in the slot, Ginger will get it Thursday morning. She's not in on Wednesdays anyway, but we want to receive it by then. It'll be there Thursday morning.
Good point, Karen.
That was the difference.
Yep. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Dean has a chat. He wanted to discuss, I think, section 10. I don't know if everybody saw the chat.
No, I didn't see the chat. Did he send it out to everybody?
I think...
He said the last bullet 10 does not, does seem to cover what bullet was concerned.
Is this, is this... There, there was a second one, too. I don't know if this is any better by changing some settings.
I think he's correct.
I don't know what he's saying.
No, he's saying that it says you were concerned about the whole, you know, stepping up to the room and all that, and who's recognized or not. But what 10 says, speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Speakers are encouraged not to read submitted written communications verbatim, should summarize their comments, et cetera. So he says it covers some of the concerns.
Yes. He's right.
Okay.
I also sent a second chat.
Oh, I only see the first part.
Me too.
Oh, wait, there's two. There's a number two.
I don't have that.
But I don't see the second one. The last one...
What are we talking about? I'm confused here.
Down the bottom bar, underneath, you see participants chat, share screen, record, down the very bottom. Hit on chat, and that's, you'll see Dean's comments. You should have, okay. But he's talking about a second one, and I never got a second one.
No, I didn't get a second one.
Dean, you might not have pushed enter.
I gotta turn on my... It's hot up in my computer room.
There. I suggest switching the second two bullets of section one.
Sorry, try that.
Forget it, Wes. You can't understand it, Dean.
Deb could probably read it.
He says, I suggest switching the second two bullets of section 10. It will read more so eloquently. The second two bullets. Oh, all right. So speakers, say speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer as bullet one, and that the public may speak only during a duly noticed public hearing?
Oh...
It's confusing, why it says the second two bullets.
Put the first one second.
I think what he means is the, the second and third bullet, so it would read, the, the public, the first bullet would be, the public may speak only during a duly noticed public hearing. The second bullet would be speakers must step up to the microphone at the front of the room. And the third one would be speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. So it's saying that you got to step up at the, to the microphone before we're going to recognize you. Does that make sense?
I would keep it the way it is.
Yeah, because if...
Yeah, I...
Well, yeah, because we usually, I mean, everybody, poor Harvey, I'll use Harvey, right? So if Harvey starts to, you know, raises his hand or starts to get up, we ought, you know, somebody would say, Carrie would say, or I would say, you know, hi Harvey, something like that. So I don't know if... I mean, I think we usually recognize a person as they walk up to the microphone, don't we? Not recognizing particularly by name, but, you know...
Right.
I remember them raising their hand to be recognized, not just everybody, you know, two or three people get up at the same time, walking up to be recognized. It can be more orderly to raise your hand to get recognized and then come up the front.
Generally, I know at our meetings, they don't do that. It's more like they get up quietly, walk to the back of the room, get in line for the microphone. I think you might want to just, I mean, reversing them works fine. And either way, it really, it's tomato, tomato here, I think. Um, but yeah, they do step up to the microphone in front of the room, and then they're recognized, you say, you know, good evening, and go ahead. So you might want to reverse those. But you don't have to. It's a, it's a deal.
Yeah, but if you re... If you reverse them... I don't know. I don't know. I kind of hate the way it is.
Then let's leave it that way.
Let's, let's, what, what does everybody think?
I'd leave it.
I think you'll leave it.
I think you should leave it alone. It can sound fine.
I mean, you know, Carrie, obviously, you know, in your meeting, if, you know, I, this is kind of turning into a, a bigger meeting than the intent. Your meeting, if everybody, all your board thinks it should be reversed, then, you know, we can keep going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth.
That's what we don't want to do. I mean, it's, it's, I don't see us having a problem if you'd like to reverse it, but I think it can stay this way. It all means the same thing. We all know how it works. It's a small village. You know, it's supposed to be kind of a general, and, you know, it's up to the chair people of each one to enforce this the best they can. It's never going to be perfect.
Okay. Yeah, I like that. All right. So...
Any other changes?
I'll give everybody a few seconds here to look through, make sure there are no other questions or... I mean, you, this is, this has really been very informative and helpful, especially for the boards that are coming after this one. You know, you'll have things fairly hammered out.
No changing them, Danny.
Well, no, I mean, you know, they might come up with something that makes total sense that we didn't think of.
Yes, but then we go all the way back around again.
Well, yeah, but by then we'll all be tired of it, and then we'll have to just say, yeah, do whatever.
How about section one, regular meetings? You have it, the second bullet, that they will be community room. Should you have a camera at the hall and say unless otherwise posted?
That's good.
That's a, you know, because the Zoom meetings. Let's see. That's a good point.
Unless otherwise posted, says it all.
The only thing is, right now with the organizational meeting at the beginning of the year, they are set for seven o'clock. You can change that at your meeting for a following meeting, like we did a six o'clock one, but they are set by the village board general meeting in April.
But I think what Danny means is, what if it's a Zoom meeting? This says will be held in the community room. So, but what if it's a Zoom...
I thought you were talking about the time, I'm sorry.
No, 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 just the location, not the time.
He's got a point.
The third bullet covered that. Says any deviation.
Yeah, I would just, I think you're, you do cover that there.
But that just says planning board.
Yeah.
Danny, can you, I'm sorry, can you, since you are a host at the moment, since you still have it, I don't have it back, can you let somebody in?
I don't have that. Let me just see. Security. Neighbor waiting room.
I think it's Dean, I think.
I don't have a waiting room here or tab to open.
Who's trying to get in?
I think it's Dean.
Oh.
Yeah, once I transferred it, it won't let me take it back.
How'd you transfer it? I've never transferred.
Can you click on the three little dots in my square and maybe see if it says make me host?
Up at the top.
Yeah, in my box, there should be three squares or three dots.
You are now in control.
All right, I am the host now. I can let him in. Good, he's in. Okay. There we go.
Um, I think we should... We just did this with an organization I'm involved with because we have been having the Zoom meetings. And I think that... I think we need to have something about the Zoom meetings or, um... Let's see.
I like Danny's suggestion. The meetings shall commence at 7:00 PM and will be held in the community room at Village Hall unless otherwise posted.
Yep. That's good.
Perfect.
And then we further clarify it by saying any deviation of the foregoing paragraph, which that, that can also apply to the time. For some reason, we can't do it at seven, whatever.
Right.
Um, folks, I apologize for going out. Is this any better?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the nature of my network, my office. I apologize. What I would suggest, based on some recent articles, is not to worry too much about Zoom meetings because there is some restriction that all municipalities may be required to do electronic media very soon anyway.
Oh, I saw that article, yeah.
Yeah, it may have to be rewritten or, or further modified if that comes down the pike in the next year or so anyway. So probably what we have is enough for now as far as who has to do what. Again, just as a...
Should we say unless otherwise hosted by electronic media?
No, I think we should just, if, if, we either leave it as it is or, or say unless otherwise posted.
Let's do otherwise posted.
Because electronic media, it could, I mean, who knows? What it might be in a month from now.
Right.
And we'll have to change it then anyway, so what's the difference?
Right, right, right. All right. All right. Now we make, okay.
Since we have to vote on it, Deb, you want to just go over so that we know that everyone knows what the changes?
I'm certainly going to try. All right, so, um... From what I can, from what I noted, we made changes to section one, adding a bullet two, unless otherwise posted. Section two, and we went back and forth on this. I believe we took out the third bullet totally?
Correct. Right.
Okay. Section five was modified to add timeframes to when the office must receive any agenda items that would be given by the chairperson. And was also modified a timeframe for when the public must have information in for a hearing.
Um, Deb, can, this is Ginger. The, I think that just you and Danny as chairpeople got that initial document, and then, and Carrie, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, that what the board actually got, what the rest of the board here tonight got, is already the updated information. So I don't know that we have to have a motion about changing that when really, they're not seeing any of that change anyway. They, what they have in front of them is exactly what should be. Does that make sense? Because I think otherwise, we've got to go back. I don't, I don't know if we would go back and say, okay, bullet number, like, I don't even know what those changes are. I'm not sure that I'd have to go back to the office and say, okay, what did we change? But.
We could, we.
I think you can make a motion at some point when you're ready to approve the meeting procedures as discussed this evening with amendments to section, whatever it was, one, two, five, and 10. I think that's what it was, but I'm not sure if I'm right. And as discussed, you said it perfectly earlier. I think that's all you need.
That's kind of what I was going for, but, you know, I think John or Barb asked me to go through each and every one, so.
Well, we didn't have that many we discussed. I mean, there was that one and nine. We put most.
One, two, five, and 10. So. All right. So why don't we just do that? Could I have a motion to approve sections one, two, five, and 10 of the meeting procedure document as discussed tonight in this meeting?
Add nine.
Nine?
Yeah, first, the chairperson resounding the meeting, and the chairperson's absence, the most.
Right, right, right.
And I think you might want to say to approve the planning board rules of procedure document, because you wanted, you're approving the whole document. We've never had one like this before. And then you might say, including the amendments to section one, two, five, nine, and 10. Does that make sense? So we're adopting the rules of procedure and including the amendments to those five sections.
Do we want to, yeah, I guess we could, I was, I was trying to avoid making it specific to planning board versus, but.
No, you know what, Deb? They are all different. We.
Yeah, they are, yeah. Zoning board, you're right.
Yeah. I mean, the zoning board and the planning board are pretty similar, but they vary, you know, in, in some ways substantially, not substantially, but they vary from the village board because they do different kind of business. So it's okay to say, we as the planning board are adopting these rules of procedure for the planning board, and that includes all the amendments we've made tonight to those five sections.
All right. So we, yeah, all right. Let me just. Let me just try to get my thoughts down here. All right. Stop, rewind, play. Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the procedure document for the planning board as discussed this, this evening, from sections one, two, five, nine, and 10?
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do roll call, and so, board member Caruso.
In favor.
Board member Height.
In favor.
Board member Hukey.
In favor.
Board member Melfelder.
In favor.
And chairperson Hext.
In favor.
Great.
Okay. We got it covered. Do we have any other business we want to discuss tonight, other than what we've already discussed?
This is Dean. I just have a quick question on that. More for information, doesn't need to change at all?
I'm watching.
The executive section, sessions, I forgot what section it was.
That was section four, yep.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to change. I'm just curious, actually, you know, just, has there ever been a need, or is there actually a ability for a planning board or a zoning board to actually go into executive session?
And I'm really. Yes, there is.
There is.
Yeah, there, I mean, there is, it is allowed by the, you know, public officers law. They are allowed. I believe that you cannot vote, or if you do vote during an executive session, it has to be recorded. I don't remember the exact law, but there's something about voting and recording and when you need to record and when you don't need to record.
Yeah, the rules, as I read them, seem to be the same as what we'd have to do for the village board. I just never thought that a planning board or a zoning board would ever need that. Again, it doesn't need to come out. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. No, they're, they're, I mean, I suppose if there were personnel problems or something like that, the need might come up. I don't know.
It can also take executive session for advice from counsel. You can, you can put it in the middle of the meeting for that purpose.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought, I hadn't thought about that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
Because I don't want to blow your bubble. Vote on that last motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
John. Oh, Barb, I'm sorry.
Barb, okay, so, board member Caruso.
I'm in favor.
Board member Height.
In favor.
Board member Hukey.
In favor.
Board member Melfelder.
In favor.
And chairperson Hext.
In favor. Thank you, everybody. That 15-minute meeting turned out to be a lot longer, but I think, I think we got it all hammered out.
Good. I hope everyone stays cool.
Thank you.
I get better.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
Night.
Thanks.
Bye.